We'll start with November 21st, 2019. Any comments or corrections?
I've had a couple.
Okay.
So, under, on the second page, under Superintendent's Notes.
Mm-hmm.
It says, Dr. Cabral was estimated she have a family consumer science charter. Chris Stewart wants to talk about potentially having, offering child, so it's
Oh, yeah.
Potentially offering a childcare course at the high school.
Yeah, get rid of having.
Yeah.
And put a, after offering.
And then childcare course, I think it's supposed to be.
Okay.
And then, a couple of sentences down, it says she is working with the police and DPW for a table talk exercises, you need to be on the table talk exercises.
For table talk exercises?
Um, I remember you saying that.
All right, that's fine.
For, yeah, yeah.
For table talk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep.
How about you, Ms. Michelle?
No.
Do I have a motion to accept these minutes?
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Next, December 5th, 2019. Any comments or corrections? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of December 5th?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. And executive session, we do not have those, so
Yeah.
That will be on the next agenda. Thank you. Okay. Next up, schedule of payments going around. Next, vote to approve foreign travel trip, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So, a science teacher, Michelle Macronos. Shucks! Practiced! All right. Okay. Take your notes. Starting over. Two, two.
Thank you.
OA science teacher, Michelle Macronos, is here with one of our co-department chairs for science, Maria Anuziata, and Michelle will be proposing her foreign trip proposal for Thailand. It will be during vacation, February school vacation of 2021. It's through EF, or Educational Tours. The trip is set to cost students $4,295 each, and she can provide any other information, answer questions that you may have.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
You're again. Um, and we are asking for approval for a service trip to Bangkok, Chiang Mai, and Chiang Rai, Thailand, for February break next year. Students will be participating in service projects during those trips, it's a little different than our most recent ones, and they'll be participating in more than 10 hours of work in the hill tribe communities of northern Thailand, helping with schools and after-school programs with the students there, since the government doesn't really fund too much schooling. Um, and then also be working alongside locals to help maintain sustainable elephant sanctuaries, which is awesome. That's what I think the kids will be most excited about. It's a 12-day trip, and we love bringing students, especially on the service trips. We've done one before this, and this would be our sixth international trip in total with EF. We love the tour company, they've been awesome with us so far. Um, and we know that these trips have enriched the lives of our students, they come back all the time. Kids come back from college and they're like, "Nobody else gets these opportunities. I just talked to kids from other schools," and they're like, "What? You get to go where?" Uh, so it's really cool to see them come back and just talk about how it changed their lives. And, that's pretty much it. Anything to add?
Nope.
Sounds good.
Are the same chaperones going this time, it's like the one to Australia?
Yes.
Sounds amazing.
Have you already had a meeting, like, ahead of this?
No, we have not. No, we are planning maybe next week, we just wanted to get approval first before we reach out to all the students.
Well, that does look exciting. Looking at the itinerary, it was like, wow, they're gonna be busy.
A service trip's
It's not really a vacation, yeah.
Yeah, and then they reflect at night, and it's awesome. We, it just really attracts a cool group of students when they spend their vacation to help out somewhere.
Right.
Um, so, that's why we chose the service trip again.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve this trip?
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, uh, keep us posted about Australia.
We love.
I'm excited about that one, too. All right, thank you. Next is vote to approve the turf sponsor side signs for OA Stadium.
Okay, so, Athletic Director Bill Matthews extends his apologies. He's attending the football banquet, and will try to make it here, but I believe this is something that we can move ahead with in his absence. If you have any questions, we can wait until he gets here. But this is a vote to approve the turf sponsor signs at the OA Stadium, the Moscato Stadium. The sponsors include Harbor One Bank, WB Mason, Barnes Auto Center, CarMax, and the Dana Barrows Basketball Club. If you look in your packets, you have color mockups of exactly what the ads would look like, and so this is for you to approve the use of them at the fields.
So, the Harbor One, the four, Harbor One.
Yes, continues on the next page.
CarMax, Barnes, and WB Mason are gonna be around the fields, but the Barrows is on the
On the, um, media.
Yeah. The building.
Building there, yeah.
Okay.
The announcers.
Any questions or comments? I thank these sponsors so much for their donation. All right. Uh, do I have a motion to accept these signs for the Moscato Stadium?
Some would.
Second.
All those in favor? I suppose I could second. All right. Um, next, discussion of possible information sheets or postings for use of the field at Moscato Stadium. So, I brought with me tonight, um, and I gave it to you guys. Did I give you one, Dr. Cabral? I don't think I did. Hold on. I got organized here. Right, yeah. So I just put something together quickly, um, and I'd be more than happy to take any input. So, would you like me to read this, what I wrote?
That's up to you.
Okay.
That's up to the committee.
Do you want me to just read it?
Sure.
Okay. And this is, this is just a sketch, this is not in stone. Precautions when using the Moscato Stadium field. Number one, and, and if those with papers here, you can see that there's like a, a very, a lot of words, and then there's a simple one. I'll go with a simple one.
Yeah.
Avoid mouth contact, ingesting of turf surface materials. Avoid direct food, drink contact with the field surface. Limit field use on hot days per district policy. Wash hands, equipment, and clothing immediately after field use. Clean any mouthpieces, shoes, et cetera, that were used on the turf. Avoid resting instruments or equipment on the turf, and immediately clean anything that has come in contact with the turf. So I know, um, I had got, this is from a couple emails that I had received about, you know, the turf and the safety and so forth. So, do you wanna say anything? Do you want one of these papers?
No, that's okay.
Oh, okay.
Am I allowed?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Um, thank you. Um, that's a good start. Uh, you have, you really have two issues with the field, because I have seen small children on it when, you know, people just go hang out there. When people are jogging, they have their small children or whatever. So, you have the two issues, you have the blades of grass, which have the PFAS in it, and you also have the rubber crumb, which has very high levels of lead. So you don't want small children, um, ingesting it. The Mount Sinai Hospital in New York just actually wrote a letter to the town of Sharon saying, "Please don't put a field in," but if you do, they have recommendations on what you should put on the signage. But, you should not have, in addition to what you said, um, no bare feet or sandals, flip flops allowed, because you shouldn't be subjecting your skin. Avoid use for passive activities. In other words, no sitting, lounging, or picnicking. So it's just for playing or practice or marching band. Wash hands and exposed body aggressively after playing on the fields. I mean, you, they should really scrub immediately after coming off of those fields. You got the washing hands before eating, drinking, or adjusting your mouth guard. Clean cuts and abrasions immediately, and I can give you this. Remove and clean shoes and gear outside before getting in the car or going indoors. Do not place instruments on the field.
Yes, we, that, that was that last one, yeah.
Some of the other ones that Mount Sinai suggests are brush hair thoroughly after play, um, shower immediately, vacuum any infill that comes into your homes. I can, if I could approach, I can give you this.
Sure.
Um, Michelle.
So that's what I was gonna ask you, is where did all this come from?
My list came from a combination of one school and also Mount Sinai Hospital.
Because, um, from the email that I got, um, I was, um, taken to a different site than this one, so, um, but that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and a lot of it is, it's common sense anyway.
It is.
You know, for any, anything, so this is great. Thank you so much. So, I think what we will do
So can I just make a couple of comments?
You can.
Okay. So, yeah, I think, I think that, I understand what you're saying about hitting all of the points, but I think the longer the sign is, the less likely people are gonna read it. So I think the shorter and more concise, the better. Um, I think that it, the, the heading maybe shouldn't necessarily say the stadium field, it should be for any turf field, so we might wanna make a more general precautions when using turf fields in general. Um, and then the last thing is, of course, um, I'm sorry.
Synthetic turf.
Synthetic turf, yeah. And then the last thing, of course, is whatever we, whatever draft we come up with, I think we need to run by town council, just to make sure we're using whatever proper wording we should be using. But, um
But I agree about getting them, um, but the more wordy is, you're gonna lose them after.
Yeah.
So if we, and there's a lot of repetition in the things that you provided and we had, so maybe lumping them in together.
And there are, there are, if I did a quick search, and there are, um, samples of signs that have been used on the field, so you could kind of look at those and see.
So where would this be posted? Like, in one place?
That, I'm not, I'm not sure about that either, we should
Probably into the entrances, but the other thing that would, had crossed
The gates?
Yeah. Well, there's two gates.
Right.
The gate on the left. But, the other thing, too, is, um, what I was thinking originally in my head, um, that, so this would, this wouldn't help with the small children, the people that, like townspeople that go on, but for the athletic, the athletics that happen, the music that happens, they would get a physical piece of paper with the rules on it.
You mean like the coaches and
So, right, and then they give them to their players.
Okay.
This is what we need to do.
Okay.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay. So we can talk about that.
Sure, yeah.
But, yes.
I agree, for something like the marching band, since we won't have other schools using marching bands on there, right? It's just Easton usually.
Unless they have a, um
I think maybe once or twice, there's been another
So if, if Rob Wheeler knows, for example, I think he's already cautioned his students, but you wouldn't have to necessarily put that on the sign, because typically people aren't bringing instruments onto the field. So if the marching band instructors know, then, and then he could certainly warn any other school that's coming for marching band, for jamborees or whatever. Then you wouldn't have to put that on the sign, because it happens so infrequently.
Okay.
And as long as Rob knows and the kids know, because they'll get used to it, then you don't have to put that on the sign. So that would also make it shorter.
And I do, I do also just wanted to say that Caroline apologized for not being here for a good discussion in this meeting, she had a family medical emergency, but she, you know, she was very interested in this topic as well.
Well, thank you. Thanks for your, um, but this is great. Does anybody else wanna make any comments or have any questions? And we will come back to this. Yes?
Can I just ask a question?
Yeah.
Could, could some of it be tailored for inside the locker room? Because I know, you know, my own child, reading a sheet at the beginning of the season, he's not gonna remember 90% of it, but he sees it every single day in the locker room.
Sure.
It is tailored to bring your cleats home, bring your this home, shop, you know, tailored to that locker room, right after he practices, it might sink in a little more, if you have any comment.
True. All right, so we need to discuss, like, how we're going to present this.
Okay.
Good.
Can we all get a copy of what, Kyla?
Yes, I will make a copy and give it to you. Yes. Fabulous.
Do you want this on the next meeting agenda?
Yes, please. Thank you. Okay, next, we have personnel change, retirement, Parkview School, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. You have your other retirement. Donna Donovan has been with the Easton Public School since 2007. She was appointed as a teacher at Project, um, Early. Yeah, just gave me a minute. Well, these things are, are gone, so I tend to forget. Uh, the position of Project Early at the H. H. Richardson, when it Well, Richardson, I'll say, was the Richardson School. Uh, in 2010, she transferred to Parkview as a preschool teacher, so she's been in the district almost 13 years. And she, well, I don't wanna say too much, because you might read it in her letter, but we are certainly sorry to see her go.
All right, I will read her letter. Dear Dr. Cabral, please accept this letter as my resignation for the purpose of retirement from the Easton School District. I will, excuse me. I will retire at the end of this school year officially, June 30th, 2020. I have greatly enjoyed being part of this school system. My friends, colleagues, and most importantly, the families at the Parkview School have been nothing short of inspiring. Every day was exceptional thanks to them. While I have received immense rewards from my position in pre-K, I feel it is time for me to enjoy myself outside of the classroom. I will miss it dearly. I know the future is bright in Easton with you, Teresa Skinner, and Allison Robey. I look forward to seeing the new Easton Elementary School when it is completed. Sincerely, Donna Donovan. Okay, do we have any comments? Do you wanna say anything, Teresa? You worked with her, right?
I hired her.
You hired her? Would you like to comment?
I, I, yeah, I'm sad to see her go. She was one of those teachers who threw everything she had into her classroom, and even saw her kids.
And she still is. She's not quite gone yet.
It is a loss for preschool.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I would echo that. Very dedicated and caring and going the extra mile for kids and families, and really, contributing a lot to the pre-K team.
That's awesome.
We'll miss her.
Well, we have a list, I don't know if they're all official yet, but the party is June 4th, so Save the date. Okay.
I just want, can I just say one thing?
You can say two things.
I have been, you know, this is my third year here in the district, and, uh, many people, when they come to the end of their careers, they just kind of soar until their, their last day. And I continually, continuously be, am impressed by those that are retiring that give it everything, and that much more, till the very, very last day. And Donna's definitely one of those people. So I just wanted to, to say that, because I'm, Easton is really a special place.
Thank you.
It's because of the educators we have here.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you. Number eight, um, summary of FY20 budget and preliminary, preliminary discussion of FY21 budget, Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Director of Finance
Oh, oh, wait a minute.
Say, uh
Time.
I'm sorry?
Do I have a motion to accept the, um, retirement of Donna Donovan?
Some would.
We almost had her stay.
Second. All those in favor? Okay, sorry, uh, we can go, go ahead. I'm not gonna repeat that.
So, uh, Director of Finance, Marilyn Gordon is here.
Wow. You need some ginkgo biloba.
Marilyn Gordon is here, and she is presenting, uh, two things this evening as part of her quarterly reviews with you about the budget. She will be reviewing the, um, to-date FY20, as well as giving you a bit of a forecast, as much as we have at this point of FY21.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so, what you had, just, oh, did you pass those out?
Oh.
So you should be getting kind of used to this format. This is probably, I think maybe the fourth or fifth time that we use this format to present the current budget, um, which is split, um, by, the first page is salaries, the second page is expenses, and then the last page is the revolving accounts, the grants, and so, kind of, the revolving accounts. And I did highlight, so, um, it's, things are progressing as nothing spectacularly unusual. Um, I did highlight some of the changes in the salary side on the back of that first page. We do have two, um, open positions right now. Um, that, uh, one, I know that, that middle school math is gonna be a long-term sell for the rest of the year, and, um, I'm not sure the TLC teacher, if it'll be paying that one, or if that's gonna be a long-term sell for the rest of the year.
You know, we're working on that. We are actively working on that.
Um, and then just some other little things, um, we, we haven't hired any hall monitors at the high school. Our, um, we were spending more money on tutors, on, um, company tutors versus employee tutors, so it's gonna be some, probably be some extra money in that line. And, um, we did carry over, we did keep money in the budget for, um, bus monitors, which we haven't spent very much money on that, and also the, um, subs, the sub-line is, at this point, looks pretty good. So, we do have, um, some money left on the salary side. The expense side, you have to assume that every cent of that will be gone, and then some, because those are, um, everything in the encumbered, everything in the expended has already gone out the door, everything in the encumbered call is already obligated. And then, the expenses are just things, you know, going forward, it could be anything from, um, you know, food for consumer science as we go.
Paper, ink.
Paper, ink. Supplies for athletics, um, maintenance as things break, as we hire people, we don't know, we can't really forecast that now, we just assume that all that expenditure money will be gone. And you can see where, that it was, um, the remaining balance was, when I gave this to you in October, it was a million two, and now it's down to eight thirty-one, so it's, it's going. So I And then the last page is just where we are with our grants and revolving accounts, the lunch account, kindergarten, um, some donations, the naming campaign, all those.
What is, um, under the first line with the grants?
Oh, what, the, um, so if, if a grant's, I wanted to put down what, why I had the number there, I wrote the number of the full amount of the grant.
Okay.
So the way the grants work is as we, we apply monthly for the, for the revenue.
Okay.
So it looks, even though, you know, that encumbered line, obviously, we haven't, those are being spent as we go.
Yeah.
So, um, as we spend that money every month, then we request money, so just to show you what, the total of that.
Okay. Two forty is a special education grant, and we primarily pay power professionals with it.
What, what is, maybe I should know, the Safer Schools Tech?
That was a, that was a, just a one-time technology grant that we got this year that we used for security cameras.
Oh, okay. How are we doing with school lunch this year, with people paying their bills? Are we good?
We're
Where are we?
Um, we're good. Um, we actually, we actually had somebody at Christmas time come in and wanted to make a donation to pay off some, some people's
Outstanding balances.
No kidding?
Outstanding balances.
Oh.
So I gave us some
Anonymously.
That's very nice. Awesome. Okay.
Um, yeah, we, we do keep that in check, because we do have the, uh, you know, the two lunch minimum, and then the dreaded cheese sandwich.
The upper grades only.
Nothing wrong with a cheese sandwich.
For the upper grades only.
Okay. Thanks for doing this, Marilyn, this is awesome. It's depressing, but it's awesome. Does anyone have any questions or anything for Marilyn? And then you, you have a second.
And then, okay, so that brings us to the, the start of the 21 budget. Um, so we've been going to the, um, budget subcommittee meetings, and, uh, it's looking like another possibly two and a half percent year, that's what I think we're looking at. On our side, we have the principal, we've had the principals had two meetings with their staff to pull together their reactive, proactive, and strategic needs. And this will be all presented at our cabinet meeting on this Monday, where we'll get the district-wide, so now we're gonna get a good look at
Yeah.
What, how everything's going to fit together. At that meeting, we'll also have, um, we'll go over the general ed enrollment figures and the special ed enrollments by program.
Okay.
Um, I have done the rough draft of the staff rollover, so just taking every single person and what, um, they'll make contractually next year, and that comes to 2.415%. There are other things that will play into that, um, that doesn't include retirement, you know, any of the retirements, um, and replacing those people, and then there are some other things like, um, that were not budgeted this year that we have to add into there, um, like safety care stipend, paras attending staff meetings, and attendance stipend, library after-school, uh, taking a look at the amount of money that we have in there for degree changes. So we have to look at all those things and see where we need to, we need to add some, some more money to that. We also have to make a decision with the school committee on if we want, right now, all of our substitutes, well, the teacher subs are at $90 a day, and the, all the other subs are at $13 an hour. Minimum wage is now 1275. So we need to, and then next January, it goes up to thirteen, it's going up by seventy-five cents a year, so it gets to $15. So it's gonna go up to 1350 next year, so we need to decide, do, is that something we wanna do? Do we wanna, do we wanna try to follow minimum wage, which we mean in the middle of the year going from thirteen to 1350, and maybe even bumping the $90 up a little bit? But we'll have to, this will be, we'll have to
When is it going to 1350?
Next January.
It's every January.
Every January.
It's on.
So did it go, it went to thirteen, it's, no?
So it's, right now, it's 1275, and we're paying thirteen.
Right.
We're good right now.
And that's what it just went up to?
It went, just, right, it just went up to, to 1275.
So next January would be thirteen fifty-five.
Thirteen fifty.
Or thirteen fifty. Thirteen fifty. So if we wanna
Right.
If that's something we wanna do, then we'll have to put in some more money.
Just as a reminder, you did this, because we advised you that this was coming before. As a school district, we are not obliged to pay minimum wage, but obviously, we want to pay our employees minimum wage, but beyond that, uh, it's already difficult to find substitutes, and if we are competing with minimum wage corporations, a Walmart or a Target, for example, then the pool is even harder to fill, so it is a recommendation.
Okay.
So that's
But that, obviously, you can see how that plays into the budget for next year, so we need to determine that as soon as possible.
Then we have contractual things that we need to look at, like, um, this year, our general ed transportation, the buses, that is, is, is the time this year.
It's up for bid.
Oh, it is, already?
It is.
Already, it's been five years.
It's been five years, I know.
This was a So we, we're, we're gonna get that out on the street soon, so we can have a handle on how much that's gonna be. And then we also have to look at things like, um, the wastewater treatment plant, I'm not sure if, when that contract is up, just wanna double-check on that. I'm not sure if, when that contract is up, just wanna double-check on that. The electricity and gas, where we are on those. I think we're good on the gas, not sure on the electric. Legal fees, science from scientists, coffee machines. We have to look at all of our contracts. Then there's, then we have to look at all the special ed. We have to look at all of the, which we've already started doing, all of our out-of-district placements, what's gonna be changing next year and how that will also affect special ed transportation.
Do you even know how that's gonna be changing next year? Did you get like notices about tuition changes or anything like that?
All the time.
Okay.
All the time. In fact, we'll be on a meeting next week. Because districts, out-of-district placements apply for increases
Okay.
due to state and then they have to meet a weekly go-to. So they all are increasing.
Okay.
It's at different points in time and we never know when it's going to happen. That's the challenge from a budgeting standpoint.
It happens mid-year.
So we have one, one school actually that was about two hundred and ten thousand dollars for residential school. It's going up next year to two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars per year. That's obviously extreme of residential placement, but.
But we also look, have to look at our enrollment too and what kids we have. Kid, right, kids that would be either changing placements, kids that would be aging out, graduating.
And obviously, we don't know about circuit breaker or transportation yet until the governor's budget comes out.
Exactly. Right, the governor's budget comes out the January twenty-fourth. So, but we don't expect chapter seventy to change. We, we'll probably just get the same thirty dollars for people to do that. But we're hoping that we're gonna get some circuit breaker money and maybe.
Circuit breaker transportation.
Circuit breaker transportation.
Which you couldn't count before.
Right, adding in, adding in, adding in transportation.
And charter school, we don't know where that's gonna fall. So those two things, we're watching very closely, but yeah, we have zero data on that right now.
And they've also said it's gonna be phased in, so.
Right.
Right, yeah, it's about twenty-five years.
You don't know how much.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a city funded.
But other, in special ed, in special ed, we also have to look at, did I say that? The in-district special programs, the needs, kids moving from one school to another. Right? And nursing, we do have some students that have like one-to-one nurses. Where we are on that. And one thing that has been growing is our interpreting services. And also, we did have some students that, on the revenue side, we had three students from Milis that we tuitioned into the program here at the high school. But unfortunately, that is.
Milis is starting their own program. So they have paid us to educate three of their kiddos and realized, why are we paying somebody else? We can start our own program. So I anticipate in September that we will lose that revenue, which was about.
One ten.
One ten.
Oh, really?
And that would count in the summer programming for those students.
Over a hundred ten thousand.
So this potential and maybe some other programs that we may be able to tuition in. I had a district reach out to me recently. That's not gonna pan out, but, you know, we all share with each other across districts and try to support one another.
What about the, the program that was in, or is that still going on? That was.
Yes, the both of them are still there. So they now have three classroom spaces that they rent for class. And it's been fabulous. It's really been, it's really been amazing since our own.
Okay, great.
But we just do have to keep all of these things in mind when we do the budget.
Right. Just to sort of recap that, the town is a conservative figure that the economists are predicting from the state this year is two point one percent increase. The town is using a two point five percent placeholder for our budget and other town budgets. Our rollover of staff contractual obligations only is two point four percent. That does not include the list of items that Marilyn just went through. It doesn't include staff input on critical needs, that the entire district is working on that right now. Cabinet is going over that on Monday. We have to tease that out and see what the critical needs are and bring them forward as part of the budget. It also doesn't include our special ed programs that are all in place. We have a need for the R O program, the skills program next year. So we have a cohort moving up.
Okay.
And we don't have that. It's the only one that's missing right now because we didn't have a cohort. Well, now we need it for next year, else those students potentially would be outplaced. So it looks like two point five, two point four, that's great, we're under the two point five, but four hundred thousand dollars is one percent.
Yeah.
Just losing the one hundred, Christie's got one ten. Christie's gonna talk about something, which is, again, an issue, which is about at least that much, but actually it's more than that. The tuitions, the transportation, easily, we could go another one or two, maybe even three percent over. So again, like last year, we, we do not have a great outlook. But of course, we're gonna work on it the best we can. We will provide the town, same time, same way we have, since I've been providing it, with regress, it's gonna be regressive, reactive, proactive, and strategic budgets. And it frankly will be up to the town to determine what they want the education of their students to look like, what they want to provide for, and what will be available for us, for the district. And we will make that very clear. We are very fortunate to have the combined experience, professionalism, and input from the entire staff right now. They're all working very hard on this at every single level. And they're bringing this to us on Monday and we're gonna look at it very seriously because we value their input incredibly. And so we are going to take all of that into consideration. They're not gonna recommend something that isn't desperately needed or proactive because it's an imminent need.
Yeah.
And we're also gonna provide strategic because I think it's very important for the district to know and for this town to know what we believe we can easily provide to their students, but might be out of reach right now because of finances. So we'll be sharing all of that, being completely transparent. And this is the work we're embarking on right now. It's taking a lot of people, a lot of time, but we will, I am extremely confident that it will be exhaustive. It will be, as I said, transparent. And hopefully, I will present this in as clear a way as possible to the town's people as we're going through this process.
So not, not to be, thank you, yeah, not to be a wet blanket on fire, but if the state came in tomorrow and said, you need free full-day kindergarten, how do we do it?
We have to cut seven to eight hundred thousand dollars out of our budget.
So there's no.
Which, as I just explained, is about two percent.
So, but there's no way that maybe the town would say, we see that the state has forced you to do this and they're not giving you any money. Could, is it possible that funds could be kind of?
We're the largest district, we're the largest department in the district. Two percent for us is, will decimate us. Two percent elsewhere would even be worse than that. The only way that that would be possible is through a debt exclusion, is through an operational override. There's no other way I can see that that would be possible.
And hopefully, with something like that, they, you know, wouldn't be a long lead, but they give you at least.
Well, I'm not saying they're coming in tomorrow. But it's on the burner, right?
It's current legislation.
Right, okay.
There's a couple of things where there's legislation there now, not just kindergarten, but a couple of other things that, yeah.
Could, could be devastating.
And my colleagues, I had a superintendent meeting out in Marlborough on, yesterday. And they are scrambling to, to get it done right now. And most of them are on four-year plans and they are now in year three or four of their four-year plans. So that chart I show every year since two thousand twelve, it's gonna be like Easton.
Yeah.
It's going to be the town that, that doesn't have free-day kindergarten. And so as, again, we've been predicting, the state will make it compulsory and it will be on the burden of the taxpayers. And I can tell you, from speaking to legislators and basically from common sense, they're not gonna offer any extra funding for a town when three hundred out of three hundred and fifty communities
Right.
have already financed it themselves and found some way to do that. So it's just, it's a warning that we've been giving and we have not yet been able to get the financial support to make that happen, but.
Well, there's legislation out there for pre-K too.
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
So we'll have more info, definitive stuff at the next update. And also, we're gonna go over the revolving fund revenue at the next one too, because we also have to incorporate the athletic fees and kindergarten fees and elementary fees and lunch fees.
When do I always review the fees? What is this?
This is, we're doing it earlier this year so that it's actually part of the budget process.
Okay, good, okay.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments or? Okay, so depressing. Next, discussion and possible vote to approve Tickets at Work. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. So as you can imagine, with all of the unfunded mandates, the requirements, the societal challenges that are happening, our educators are, are being taxed more than ever in my thirty years in education that I conceive to get things done. It is extremely difficult at everyone, at every level, including central office, the administrators, teachers, service providers, power professionals, everyone. So one of our, as you know from our strategic plan, one of our goals this year is really working hard to increase the, the mental health and wellness of not only our students but our staff. And so without a lot or any funds to do something like that, we're really working hard to try to be, bring in as many things as we can to be perks or bonuses or even small tokens of appreciation for the work that they do every day. One of those Marilyn has, is bringing to you today as a potential offering. It would be cost neutral for us, but I'll let Marilyn explain what it is. It does require your blessing and, and a vote for us to go forward, so I'll let Marilyn explain it to you.
So there is somebody in my office that actually had this at her previous place where she worked and she said it was really great because she could get discounts on tickets to the Disney park fees, you know, park entrance fees. So they buy tickets in bulk, this company, and then anybody with, in Easton, if we sign up for this, anybody with an Easton K-12 email address could log in and buy tickets from these. And they have everything from sports tickets, concert tickets, hotels, theater, yep, theater. So.
And a discounted rate.
You have a flyer in your.
A discounted rate. I did talk to somebody from Babson College, they said they use it. They have, they have fifty employees a year that, that use it, that really like it. I did, supposedly the town of Andover uses it, but I couldn't get, I did talk to one person in Andover and she didn't know what it was. Obviously, she's not using it. But the, that wasn't the person that they told me to talk to and I left her a message and she never called me back, so.
So how does that, what's the sign up?
You just sign, you just sign up and, and then you let the people, they, you sign up at the company and then they know that anybody that has our easton.k12.us is eligible. So they would create their own account and.
But what's the, do you have to pay like a user fee?
Yeah, there's no, there's no fees.
There's no, there's no hook into this?
Nope.
Well, I'm sure the company has a percentage of the sales of the ticket for whatever they purchase it for. Even though it's still provided at a discount.
It doesn't come back to the district.
The purchaser is the one that provides the.
Are they, and they, they're not like marketing other things to anyone or using the emails?
No, I asked that question and I had John Souza, I asked him first if, if this was okay, you know, and I did speak to the, to the person at the company, like they do not market to you, they don't use your email, they don't use any of your personal information.
The, you, the information you have is followed by the actual contract. So if you want to take time to read this before the next meeting, we can hold the vote till the next meeting so that you can see if you have any further questions about it, if you haven't had time to read it and.
So I was just gonna say, so I was reading this, fell asleep a couple times, but, and I, I kindly, I was a little confused. I was really looking forward to this. I think, for one thing, I would like to wait, because I would like to talk to somebody that has this, that does this.
Yeah.
So maybe we can talk to, who's, what's the name of it? Tickets at Work, is that the company?
Oh, yeah. I mean, talk to the, to the representative there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And just get, I, I just need a little better idea, because I have an easton.k12 and I go places, so I would like this, I think, if it's gonna save some money. But it is, this is a huge contract. I mean, there's a lot of pages here.
So they do mark, so they do market to the people. Christie just pointed this out.
They send promotional information.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be helpful if we could find some buddy, some district, some school that uses this, just to kind of hear what their.
Even if it's not, even if it's not in Massachusetts, I guess it doesn't really matter.
It doesn't really, yeah.
So maybe I should, because I was limiting it to Massachusetts.
Did you say Babson used it?
Babson College uses it. And, and the town, and the town of Andover, but I couldn't get ahold of anybody there.
Okay.
But I could expand past Massachusetts.
Or even Ba, I mean Babson.
Or somebody from Babson.
Yeah.
Now, every student has, does every student have an easton.k12? No, no. They just have a login, like a.
A Google login.
They have an ID, okay. So this is just limited to our staff?
They have.
What about people that are easton.ma.us?
I didn't ask the town if this is the, I mean, that's another thing I could do to
They would have, no, they have, no, they're not included on this.
Right.
And now she's elaborating that we haven't checked to them to see if they also want to do it. But this does not include them.
Okay.
So I think.
And that, no, it's, they would probably have to have their own separate account because it's a different email extension.
Okay. No, I mean.
I mean, it sounds.
Yeah.
So there's no rush to vote, we can check.
But I always get a little.
That's because.
Nervous? I'm with you.
Too good to be true.
But this is, no, this is, I, when I was looking through it, I was kinda like, yeah, well, I don't really get it, but it looks good, so, okay.
Thank you, Marilyn.
Yeah, thank you very much. And we'll, we'll put this on another agenda, then hopefully the next one, get some more information. Vote to accept anonymous donation. Dr. Cabral.
Okay. Occasionally, we do benefit from extremely generous donors and every amount is extremely important to us. A donation has been presented to Easton Middle School for five hundred dollars. The donation has been, it's requested that we allocate this anonymous donation to a student who wants to attend the Quebec trip and needs financial assistance. It is not a particular student. The EMS world language teacher running the trip, Rebecca Michael, will determine who the student will be based on need.
That's awesome. Any questions? Do I have a motion to accept this donation?
So moved.
All those in favor to accept this fabulous anonymous donation. Okay, thank you. That's wonderful, very nice.
That was very nice.
That warms my heart. Okay. School calendar. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, this is the second reading and possible vote on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar. Can't believe I'm saying that. You have, you were originally presented with three drafts. We whittled it down to one that was recommended to you from the leadership team. And this is your opportunity, of course, to ask any other questions that you might have, make any changes, or vote to accept the recommended calendar for next year.
Questions or comments from anyone? Which one, which, which one do you like? Do you wanna comment on any of them?
Sure. So the, the biggest difference, as we reviewed last time, was the start date and the end date. The conference dates, the half-days for the parent conference dates and the professional development dates were the same. But again, the start dates were a little bit difficult because of the lateness of Labor Day next year. So when we reviewed the calendars for the second and third choice calendars, we made note of the fact that the teacher's contract, or the unit aid contract, I should say, states that school cannot begin the Monday before, the Monday before Labor Day. And so if you go in reverse order, the third calendar was going to have the teachers or the staff professionals start on the thirty-first and then August thirty-first and have school on the first, with students on the third. And the second calendar was going.
Do you wanna explain why that was a problem, with students starting on the first? Michelle, were you here?
I was, I'm trying to remember what the problem was.
That was the state primary, that way it's on that day, right?
The, and it is, well, I had explained that the town clerk had said that they were, the state was considering making September first the election date for primaries. And because it is a presidential election, of course, she expects a large amount of people to turn out. And so having students start school on that day, school being in session while we are having elections at Oliver Ames, could potentially be problematic. We don't want to violate any regulations for voting and we also don't want to disrupt the school day. So that was not the preferred choice. Since then, it actually has been chosen as September first.
Oh, okay.
So that is a definite. The second calendar, which had everyone pushed back and the staff was starting on September third and the students were starting on September eighth after Labor Day, that was problematic. 3rd and the students were starting on September 8th after Labor Day, that was problematic because the final dates with snow days would be June 21st or June 28th, and that is far too close for us, for comfort, because you cannot go beyond July 1st.
Right.
And if we were to do that, we would have to do what I remember doing as a teacher. We had school on a couple of Saturdays, we had school during February or April vacation, and we just would rather avoid that if possible. It also gets extremely hot that late in June, and we don't have the facilities that would help our students and staff be comfortable. So the first, and by the way, I had also gone through why we had, the reasons for all the other dates were, were very educational in nature. I realize now it sounds like these are kind of smaller issues, but we had gone over all the other reasons before with the three, when we were considering the dates for the three of them. The first one has the staff starting on September 1st, which should not be problematic or interfere with elections, and we will have plenty of, we'll have ample parking, we will not have anyone really in the areas where the elections are taking place, so that shouldn't be a problem at all, and then students starting on September 2nd.
So does that mean November 3rd is no longer PD day?
Yes.
No, November 3rd is a professional.
The two PD days of the 3rd.
November 3rd is election.
You're just supposed to say it's because of the election.
November 3rd is the election.
But that's when they have just the teachers come in, so the parking lots are open.
Right, and for the same reason as the primary, because it's a presidential, this year we had school during an election, but because this is a presidential election, we agree with the town clerk that that could, again, be very problematic.
Sure.
As voters, voter turnout is, is much higher than typical.
I also like that the January 15th professional date does make a long weekend.
Right.
For students, so that's good.
We did analyze the data from this year in terms of attendance, and while there was a slight increase, it wasn't enough that would make us believe that we shouldn't do it again next year.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
No.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion that we vote on calendar number one, starting, staff starts September 1st, 2020, and the last day without snow days is June 16th, 2021, oh my God, as printed on this paper.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Done. Not a lot of options on that one this year. Okay. Vote to approve policies JFABD, JFABE, and JFABF. Second reading, Dr. Cabral.
So Sarah Slaughterback from the homeless education state, she's the homeless education state coordinator from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We were contacted by Ms. Slaughterback about new recommended policies for homeless students, military children, and children in foster care. So we had our legal counsel review the policies as recommended by Massachusetts Association and School Committees, and Rebecca Bryant did review them for policy JFABD. She felt that these could reasonably adopt, be adopted by the school committee without adjustment.
Okay.
For JFABF, she also felt that this could reasonably be adopted by the school committee without adjustment, and she recommended that a statement be added to JFABE, which is Educational Opportunities for Military Children. She looked at the general obligations and felt that there was, there is an exception for participating in extracurricular activities that she did not see in this policy, and so while she does not recommend we delete anything, she just recommends adding the phrase that the schools are obligated to, quote, facilitate inclusion in extracurricular activities regardless of deadlines to the extent students are otherwise qualified. I'll give this to you.
Does that make sense?
And so you could vote on accepting the first two as is, and the third with the addition of the phrase to cover the extracurricular activity provision.
And then, so these three would take the place of our.
Current three, yes.
No, no, but, what? Say that again?
These three would.
Will take the place of this one?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay. Any comments or questions?
No, makes sense.
It does, and they, they will, I mean, they're very, the office policy should be this. Right, Mrs. Wiseman?
Right.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept these policies with the correction to JFA?
B.
B.
Second.
E. Uh, all those in favor? Sorry, losing it.
I'm losing it.
Okay. Continue the discussion on the naming of the new elementary school.
So we are adding this to every agenda until you name the school.
Mm-hmm.
Basically, so it is just for any conversation you may have, if you have any conversation on the topic of.
So I did a Blanche Ames research.
Well.
She's very interesting.
She is.
I had no idea.
And that is because we had a letter written to the school committee about a recommendation to name it after Blanche Ames.
Right.
So, yeah, so she was ma, she's married to Oaks Ames, no relation. Just kidding, a good little side note. She's an artist, she produced political cartoons promoting women's suffrage, and she was the president of the Eastern Women's Suffrage League, treasurer of the Mass Women's Suffrage League. In 1916, she helped found Birth Control League of Massachusetts and served as its first president. She helped to form the Doctors Bill to clarify the law which regulated the ability of doctors to provide birth control to married women, and then she later helped establish access to birth control. And she also was a board member and president of the New England Hospital for Women and Children in Boston, and she held several patents for mechanical inventions, I mean, she was really.
And published many books on botanical drawings.
She did the illustrations, her husband wrote the books and she did the illustrations.
She was a woman ahead of her time in terms of STEAM.
Unbelievable, yeah.
Programming and the suffrage movement.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I'm really interested to read about her.
And of course, lived at Borderland.
Right.
I'm not advocating for any name, it's just that we know. Our students did a project on Blanche Ames as part of a STEAM initiative, so that's why.
Yeah, she's very interesting. Encourage everyone to read about her.
And then I had an email from someone that said maybe Mary Ames frothingham.
Oh.
So that, that's a whole nother story, too.
Okay.
She was a, I think she was a teacher, and she gave gifts to the children because some of the, you know, her and her family members, and she, I, I will print that up next time, but I guess more importantly than, I mean, that's good that we have all these things coming out, but how do we put this together? Do we, so I had written down maybe two school committee members, the three principals, two members from each school's PAC or PTA, somebody from the historic commission, somebody from the select board.
What about the staff?
Neighborhood residents, well, yeah, so I've just got all these question marks here. Staff, definitely.
Well, I just meant other than the administrative.
Right, yeah. No, no, I, I just, I was just throwing out things, so what else? Who else? I mean, we don't want it to be a.
As a staff committee meeting?
We don't want it to be a committee of a hundred people, but I think we need to have a committee that does this, not just saying, okay, we're gonna go.
Right.
We're gonna pick this name out of a hat.
You can do it anyway, you'd like.
How did the high school do? Um, not the high school.
Before my time.
No, no, well, Oliver Ames High School was before all of our time, that was.
Richardson Olmsted?
Richardson Olmsted, that's what I meant. How did we get that?
That's what we need Caroline for.
Okay.
She actually told me and I, I.
We'll find out.
Don't remember.
But that's a good idea to kind of put together.
Richardson Olmsted is named after two people.
Right.
And you have two names. It's not impossible that the women have to do two women.
Okay, so, I mean, what do you guys think about that?
I think that makes sense.
I mean, I don't want it to be such a group that, you know, fills up this room.
No, but it would be nice to hear other people's input, too.
Yes.
So, I mean, we don't need to, we can have one school committee member, we don't need to necessarily.
Have one principal.
One principal.
Because you'll have, you probably have more than one meeting, so people can't.
Right, and people can still.
Consult with their colleagues or their constituency group and bring back.
I think the historical society is a good idea.
Select board? You're on camera.
Kidding!
Happy New Year! And definitely staff, parents, especially parents, I think, of the, not kids yet to be, but, you know, one, two, three-year-olds, you know.
What about a student?
Students, definitely. And actually, maybe a student from, like, students from away, Easton Hill.
You might want one of each group, because you have a lot of groups there, but, I mean, it's, again, it's totally up to you.
It could, it could be wielding, yeah.
Okay, we can just kind of think about it and come up with a.
Right, yeah. So right now, I mean, we, we can always go with, what was it? Easton Ele, Earl?
Easton Early. Easton Early Elementary School.
The E-E-E, Triple E. We don't want Triple E, but, but again, like I told you before, like, Easton Middle School is the only Easton school. Do you know, everybody else has a name, so then maybe we'd have to go to Easton Middle School and find a new name for them. The Amy Neen School of Fine Education.
Fine Education.
All right, thank you. All right, we continue to work on that.
Okay.
Okay, we're up to public comment. Anyone? Okay, thank you, thanks for being here. Superintendent notes?
Okay, just a couple of things. So we held another superintendent advisory meeting, I'm happy to say that we are working on some, some goals now for the future. We had a productive meeting, and I, I once again thank everyone for attending that. The Student Opportunity Act, or the SOA, because we always have to have acronyms for things, I guess, is, is coming, and I know that people are very excited about the news in the media, but just a reminder that we are not a foundation district, we're a minimum aid district, and so while many districts will justifiably benefit from the foundation formula changing, Easton will be getting the same $30 per student, and so unfortunately, we don't expect to see a big change in that, or a change at all. The School Building Committee now has been working with Perkins Eastman, the designer for the Triple E, and at this point, they have several user groups in having meetings. We had 16 in one day this week, and it is a series of meetings with literally users of each in every space, excuse me, of the, of the new building. So common sense prevails when you say that if you're going to design a main office, you have the main office personnel in there. If you're gonna design a nurse's office, you have the nurses there. If you're gonna design a library, you have the librarians there. And so that's exactly what we're doing, right down to the electrical systems, to the playgrounds, to the interiors, everything. And so we appreciate everyone who volunteered to be on all of those many, many committees. There are more than 16, we can only squeeze 16 into one day, but we have more, and they're all meeting multiple times. So like I said, they can go back, get input from their peer groups, their stakeholder groups, and then return and share it with the designers. And so the designer is collecting all this information, the designer will then present it to the school planning committee. The school planning committee, by authority of the MSBA and the Easton Town Charter, has the responsibility and, and the onus, really, of making all these final decisions. So we are thankful to the user groups for everything that they are presenting, as it will steer what the school planning committee chooses ultimately. I don't know what those decisions will entail, but we'll certainly share them as they come out. The website for the project is still live, so people can still go there, and there's a link for questions as well on there. So if anybody still has questions or would like updates, please consult the website or, and you can get to it right from our district website, or contact our offices and we'll answer any questions. We had a budget subcommittee meeting this week, that was the information that we shared with you about a 2.5% placeholder. There really wasn't a lot more information from that meeting, because we don't have any of the preliminary governor's budget numbers, except that we are preparing a presentation from the entire budget subcommittee that will be presented at the joint hearing, similar to the one we had last year with finance committee, school committee, and select board. So that will be coming up in March, and, or April.
March.
March. And we are doing a thorough investigation of every nook and cranny to see where everything is, and giving sort of a state of the, state of the budget, or state of the town, state of the resources. So that will be coming in March, and then I'm continuing my student forums, my faculty forums as well, but my next upcoming forum is at the middle school with students on January 14th, so I look forward to that, and any students that will join me for lunch. It's usually extremely entertaining, and I always learn something, which is actually the point, so I look forward to that, and I think that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Assistant Superintendent votes.
So since we last met, the Easton Public Schools Equity Series, sponsored through Easton University, hosted Dr. Tyrone Howard. He spoke with our staff at one session and then with our community at another, and he highlighted topics such as unconscious bias, educating all students, and reaching diverse learners. He was very well received by those that attended, it was a really great, great event. We wish that everyone was able to attend, unfortunately, they were not. Next week, Jimmy Casas will be coming.
Go ahead.
But we may have a video available. We're screening it and making sure that it's of decent quality, and so watch for that, it might be available.
Yeah, they were actually two different sessions, so we have a staff one, and we also have the community one, and the community one we'll actually be reviewing with ECAT to see about publication of it. So next week, Jimmy Casas will be coming to mark our third session in our equity series. Mr. Casas is the author of Culturize, which is right here, this is his book. He has multiple other publications as well, and he'll, he'll only be presenting once on January 15th, which is next Wednesday, in the Dallas Performing Arts Center here at Oliver Ames. The presentation will be from 4:30 to 6:30 for both the staff and community. Jimmy will be sharing insights on what it takes to cultivate a community of learners who embody such qualities as kindness, honesty, and compassion. You can see him on YouTube, he has his own YouTube channel, so if you're looking to see what kind, what he actually speaks about more of, you can feel free to, to go on, on the YouTube channel. Registration is preferred, but it's not required, we just like to get a sense of the quantity of people that will be coming.
And these speaker, Dr. Howard and Jimmy Casas, these are nationally recognized speakers. They do not come around very often, so we, we encourage people to attend if at all possible.
And in fact, we had said originally, you know, people, staff members have said to me, oh, we need these speakers on our professional development days, and while they are 110% correct, these speakers are so highly sought after that it's hard to get them on professional development days, because so many people have professional development days on the particular days that we choose.
Particularly election day.
Right, election day, right, the Friday before a holiday, so forth and so on, so I think that, you know, this, this was a way for us to really look outside the box and think of, how can we get these speakers to Easton so that our teachers, our staff members, paraprofessionals can be exposed to the high-quality professional development that we've seen.
And we, we try to stalk them, see when they have other engagements on the East Coast, that perhaps we can get them a little less expensively, and honestly, most of them don't want to travel to another part of the country if they don't already have engagements there, so if they're already booked for Texas or California, it's very diff, it's just very difficult to get certain dates. We tried for both of our professional development days for all of these speakers, and they just were not available. Some of them are also booking three, four years in advance.
Wow. Yes. Dr. Howard actually was on the East, he's from, he's a professor at UCLA, and he was on the East Coast for a week because of, that's how we were able to get him here in Easton.
Great.
So that was the positive news, now unfortunately.
You need to do it backwards next time. Just a, just a friendly, critical note.
So we received notification today through preliminary census estimates for the fiscal year 21 budget, or the fiscal year 21 year, that Easton will be losing a large amount of Title I funding, over $131,000.
Wow.
We are a district that hovers around the 5% indicator of students in poverty. This past year, we were over the 5%, and next year, the census is predicting that we will drop to 4.16%. We're anticipating that this decrease will also affect our Title II-A and Title IV funding in a negative manner. So we need to keep this in mind as we prepare our budget. This is, you know, very disheartening news, because we have a population of over 100 students that need major support with, that they define as those that are in high poverty and are losing the funding. The other thing, too, that, that Lisha and I talked about today, is that the state for accountability actually identifies our students that have come from low-income families. Those two algorithms are different, and so on the state website, when you look, it says that our low-income students are at a 12.6%.
Economically disadvantaged.
Economically disadvantaged, thank you, are at 12.6%, but yet our poverty, our students in poverty are at a, predicting to be a 4.16%. So we are still held accountable for our economically disadvantaged students at a higher percentage, but we're losing all of this funding. So these are, these are areas that we are, you know, very concerned about as we look, you know, we, we see an increase in our social-emotional needs, we see an increase of our students as they are not as prepared as they used to be coming to school. This is not just in Easton, this is nationwide, and actually, after being able to go abroad to China, we see this internationally as well, and it's, it's very, very concerning. So unfortunately, I do have to share that news, and it's something that we definitely have to keep in the forefront of our minds as we prepare our budget for next year.
And Title II-A and, and Title IV, our professional development.
Right.
And we rely very heavily on both of those for that purpose, which we've explained time and again just how critical that is for people that are being expected to do more than ever with limited resources. The appropriate supports in professional development are irreplaceable.
And also, just to kind of get a sense for our Title I, we use our Title I funding to hire interventionists, and just looking at our middle school staff here that's here today, we have three interventionists that are part-time, because that's what the, that's what the grant is able to fund at the middle school, and they are in need of so much more. And the thought of, of losing this funding is very concerning, because we need more, we can't afford less.
That's it?
That's all I have for you.
Come on, you have one more good thing at the end.
I told you.
Jimmy Casas next Wednesday.
Jimmy Casas, there you go, all right. And Tyrone Howard, that's very good.
And Tyrone Howard.
Very good. All right, uh, school committee notes? Anything from you? Why, I look too much help, I don't have anything either, so, okay. I am going to make a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining for agreements, paraprofessional unit, and in my opinion, having this discussion in open meeting would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. We will not be returning to open session.
Second, direct?
Okay, second, now poll. Deluca, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Have a lovely, Happy New Year.
Thank you for coming. I'm sorry, Chrissy ended on a negative note.
All the time. Yes. Yeah.
So Amy.
Yeah, I feel like people will fear the positive after the negative.
My Christmas present.
Me and middle school?
Me and middle. No, my Christmas.
There you go, that is a nice drag.
My, my Christmas present.
Yes.
Your favorite student of all time, Tia Marsh, who is waiting to have a baby. Isn't that awesome? Gonna be a boy, yeah. So good luck, stay a little, stay like 13 more years. How we thought, boys.